2024 Military City Council Meeting to Order, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Map?
She is about to be with us by phone, so come back to her.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present, so if you will, please stand with me for the prayer and then the pledge, amen. Gracious and most loving Father, we thank you on today for all that our eyes have seen and all that our ears have heard. We thank you for bringing us together as a collective body to serve and to organize and to implement things of this community. We thank you for requiring the good work on our hands. We ask that you continue to bless this community and all other communities. We ask you to continue to stand with us as we stand for you. It is these and many more blessings we ask, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So next on our agenda would be our public comments. Is there anyone here that needs to sign up for public comments tonight?
Then we have no one.
Also, we'll be moving right along. You all have received a January 23 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? There being none, I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second.
All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Is Ms. Map available?
She is.
Ms. Map?
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
So the minutes of the 23rd, 2024 council meetings are adopted as official. As far as Mayor's comments tonight, I would like to bring up, you all just came back from the city summit and had some good information given, some awards given. But one in particular I want to mention, Ms. Shinholster has sat diligently on the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for how many years? She don't want to tell her age tonight. But nevertheless, we're-
More than 15.
More than 15. Well, nevertheless, she has moved up to an officer, and we're so grateful for that. She is now the 2024-25 Treasurer for the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. So let's give her a hand for that hard work that she put in. Also, to Mr. Griffith, I'm gonna leave that off for now. So at this particular time, I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it over to the city manager. We have two presentations on tonight, and I would like to invite the Baldwin County Chief Appraiser in the Tax Assessor's Office, Mr. Wade Williams, to approach the podium for an update for the Tax Assessor's Office.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.
It's a privilege and an honor to be here. Thank you for the invitation. For those of you that know me and those that you don't, I am Wade Williams, Chief Appraiser of Baldwin County. Most time I have to duck when I say it. Some of y'all I might know quite well. At least your properties. So I thank you for allowing me to be here and also apologize for the fact that it is 2024. I've been here for six years. I started January the 3rd, 2018, and really have not connected with the city as I should. As Mr. Bo was polite enough to say, "Well, part of the reason you probably didn't was you were probably catching up a lot from the past." And that is true also. So not to waste your time and get straight to the point of why I'm here, the Tax Assessor's Office contributes to the citizens of Milledgeville, and those citizens are the same citizens of Baldwin County. Our job is to evaluate and value property, personal and real. What is the difference? Real is anything that has to deal with dirt. Personal is something of a business nature, a computer, a mobile home, and anything that might be titled. Anything that is taxable under Georgia law, we are responsible for putting a value on that. We are not fee appraisers. Fee appraisers, as some of you know and hear and teach and have been and may be a fee appraiser, we have similarities, but at the same time, total differences too. Some of those differences are we are regulated by the Department of Revenue who trains us. There are four certifications through the Department of Revenue in our business, certification one through four. I'm an appraiser three. I've been doing this business since 2003, and I call it, once you're in the business, it holds on to you because you're part of the island of misfits. If any of you have ever watched Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. Because I don't think anybody stood up in kindergarten or on graduation of high school and said, "I want to be a tax assessor." It's just not that popular of a job. But it is vital and necessary because, as we know, government and society cannot function, unfortunately, without taxes. And everybody has a different opinion of it. So going on, we are regulated by the Department of Revenue. They approve our digest, which is the Tax Commissioner's Digest every year. That is done most of the time in the fall, around September, if we meet the timeline. Sometimes it is very difficult. The city sometimes, unfortunately, gets information afterwards. One of the things I would like to emphasize is whoever I need to connect with, I would be glad to connect with and try to facilitate numbers to you so you can be proactive in trying to figure out budget, especially setting Milledge, because we all know Milledge is a very key, important, but hot topic at times, okay? We are also regulated by the Department of Audits. Everything we do is statistical. We have a goal to meet, and the quick explanation and anybody that has questions and answers, please feel free to come see me in my office, in the great Taj Mahal at the Anex. So the Audit Department regulates us by statistics, and it's simply this. We put a value on a property. That value is the fair market value to the best of our ability. That property sells. The 40% are the assessed value of that property, which, under Georgia law, you are taxed on, is then divided by the sale price. You get a ratio. Whatever the sale price is of the percentage of 40%, and the ratio is what comes out of it. Our target is to say, we valued a piece of property for $100,000. The assessed value is $40,000. It sold for $100,000, and we're perfect because our assessment, our ratio, is a .40. If I was that good, I would have been in Las Vegas this past Sunday, and I would have never met any of y'all. That is a hard target to reach, especially in a moving market. You have a history of a down market, '07, '08, and '09, and then you have from late '19 to '20, and presently still, you have a very strong market. Values on properties that sold that you natives of Baldwin County and Milledgeville probably never thought that one of the lake houses that you knew may have been a half a million dollar worth of value sold for 1.1 million. And it's not the lake that just drives the values. We did a study back in 2022 when I did the last evaluation, and only 14% of the market was represented by the lake. You have a lot of influx here. You have a lot of variables that change things, colleges. You have three. Look at the room, diversity, all ages, backgrounds, and you have people, believe it or not, that want to come to Milledgeville, Georgia. And they are moving here, and we don't have enough houses for them to buy. And as some of the younger people in the room, that would be me, of course. But I feel for the families that are starting off looking for that first home. You know, the 30 to the 40 years olds, it's hard, and it's a different time. So without going into too much detail and creating questions that I may not want to answer tonight, feel free to come to the Tax Assessor's Office. Our responsibility is to value everybody's property in here. And here's the thing, you know your property better than I do. That is why there's a period of appeal, so we can sit down and discuss. If we cannot come to agreement, Board of Equalization, a biased party of three, a panel, that hopefully can decide between your value or our value and be fair. They have been so far. They are very good. If that doesn't work out, we have Superior Court, and I don't mind putting on a suit and tie. I'm comfortable, so I can see you in court too. That's okay. But overall, we try to be, number one, we, our goal is to be compliant with how we're regulated. And two, believe it or not, we actually feel for you. I did a revolve in 2022, and I didn't have the heart to go up in 2023 because it was a heavy load for some of the people in Baldwin County and Milledgeville. And the hardest part for us is to measure something that we call depreciation. Because a 50-year-old house could have been totally renovated. We don't know to what extent. And then a 20-year-old house could have been tore up all to pieces. So it is hard for us to even find the fair market value. So at this point, just know the Tax Assessor's Office is open. We are here to serve. We are here to represent the county, represent Milledgeville, and represent the people that own the property in Milledgeville. Because if it wasn't for the ownership, we wouldn't be here tonight because we wouldn't have the revenue to function. So I do applaud the people of Baldwin County and the people of Milledgeville for their ownership, their contributions to taxes, and most of all, helps pay my salary. So at this time, thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. Our doors are open. We try to greet you with a friendly smile. Try to make you leave with a friendly smile, but we're not always successful. But taxes is never a wonderful topic to talk about, but we try. One last thing for all people that own property, primary property, in Baldwin County. Even though the city does not calculate it, homestead exemption, the county does. If you have a primary residence in Baldwin County, you need to come see us before April the 1st and apply for homestead. If you are of the age of 60 before January the 1st or of the age of 65 before January the 1st, you have two other homesteads that you possibly will qualify for. So come on down and see us Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00. I'm never there at 8:30, okay? But I am there 5:00 and after, I can guarantee you. So thank you very much at this time. Any questions from the mayor, council, or anybody in the audience?
Where is your office in the Taj Mahal?
I really have, Ms. Walden, I really have to say that.
Yes.
When you come in the front door, when you come in the front door, you have the water department to the right.
Where that is.
We are the very next door suite 120 on the right. Go past the elevator, and there we are. And if we have to stay after 5:00, you can ask Dr. Lee, who I did not know who I was dealing with the day she was in there. Man, she's tough. But we may not get you out the front door, but I will escort you out the side door and to the parking lot.
Okay.
I don't have a question, but it's something I must say.
Yes, ma'am.
Everything that Mr. Williams has said is so true. He is a very caring person. He took time out with me when I got off of my job at 4:30, and we stayed there probably close to 7:00 o'clock.
Good to hear.
Yes, yes. I mean, I had the questions. I had the questions, and if he got tired of me, it never showed. And I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Anytime.
Don't say anytime now.
Might be on vacation. No, we are there to serve, and in the capacity of we serve the county and the city, we do whatever we have to do. Now, Dr. Lee, she caught me on a good day. As you can tell, when people describe me, they say, "The bearded guy." Well, we have two bearded gentlemen in our office. You have to describe me like this, patriotic. I am red, I am white, my eyes are blue. So the patriotic man is the one, if you need me, I'm there, all right? So at this time, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come and express the information to the city of Milledgeville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. On behalf of City Council, I thank you for your hard work and dedication to the people of this county and the constant attention that you give that it requires of you, of your job. I know as an elected official, it is not always easy.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Lee has just given us the proof in the pudding with that. But we do thank you for all that you do.
Ms. Mayor, I feel for you.
Trust me, yes, okay?
And again, open door, invitation. I have another appointment, it's called family, so I am easing out right now. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving right along. Next, we have Tess Harper from the Department of Community Affairs to give us some information on the Georgia Exceptional Main Street Program and present an award to our own Milledgeville Main Street. So I would like to invite Ms. Harper and the participants from the Main Street up front. You're gonna wait here. Do it your way.
Thank you so much, and good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tess Harper, and I service the Communications Coordinator for the Office of Downtown Development with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak here tonight. As the Office of Downtown Development, we manage the Georgia Main Street Program and have the pleasure of working with over 100-plus Main Street-designated cities and offer technical support and assistance to all of our communities across the state. 19 of those communities hold the designation of a Georgia Exceptional Main Street. This prestigious recognition is a testament to the city's unwavering commitment to fostering growth, nurturing excellence, and driving innovation within its downtown area. The Main Street Approach provides a balanced path towards revitalization with a focus on economic development in the context of historic preservation. In partnership with the National Main Street Center, our participating cities are required to meet rigorous performance standards during an annual assessment process in order to become an accredited Main Street. Evaluation criteria determines the communities that are building meaningful and sustainable revitalization programs and includes standards such as fostering public-private partnership, documenting progress, and actively preserving historic buildings. Our office and the National Main Street Center acknowledge the tireless work of staff, board, and volunteers and leadership to advance economic vitality and quality of life in your community and through investment in downtown Milledgeville. The GEMS designation is earned by cities that demonstrate exceptional dedication to advancing downtown economic development and local culture. Selection as a GEMS underscores significant achievements in promoting sustainable development, cultivating a vibrant business environment, and enriching quality of life for residents. Your program has demonstrated the power of the Main Street movement to drive impressive local recovery efforts. Just within the last few years alone, downtown Milledgeville has seen over $30 million of public-private investment, with 18 new businesses opening and over 30 new jobs being created. You have sustained vibrancy by hosting over 500 events downtown. Our office is inspired by your hard work and is confident that your program will continue to help downtown flourish. It is because of Milledgeville Main Street's commitment to the Main Street Approach, its strong leadership, that I am joining you this evening to congratulate your city on once again being designated as a Georgia Exceptional Main Street. You are all to be commended for your dedication to the heart of your community. To recognize the city of Milledgeville and Carley, and as a token of our appreciation, I'm happy to present this certificate marking this achievement. Thank you to Carley, the board, the entire Milledgeville Main Street Program, and city leadership for all that you do, and we cannot wait to see what the future holds for downtown Milledgeville.
All of us go down?
If you all want to go up, you can.
Yeah, I'll go. Oh, hamburgers. Let me stand up, I'll stand up ready.
I'm taking arms, that's why I blocked.
What's up with that?
Excellent.
Is that a reading?
Very good, yes.
I didn't know how old he was.
On this next picture, you made that presentation, Harper, to- And everybody's just looking on that presentation, all right? Just looking on. Go ahead and look at it. All looking that way. Those, those looking that way, look this way towards her, all right? Thank you. This is an action shot.
Y'all are getting a little silly up there now.
My wife, have you answered a question? You'll be okay.
Thank you for talking to Jim Demasky today. Yeah, I told you everything to do to help.
Thank you so much.
You got sis, I'm telling you, go ahead. Oh, you got-
Don't go into me next.
Oh, you want them standing? Oh, okay.
I will have Carley tell you all something.
I don't know what.
Some of you, some of you I know attended First Friday, last Friday night, or Friday night before last, and mentioned how great of a night it was. Our CBB, Rebecca Snyder, who you all hear from every December, purchases what's called placer data information, which is created by somebody's cell phone pinging and being counted. Carley asked Rebecca to get the numbers together for how many were at that First Friday. So tell them how many were at that First Friday based on placer data.
Yes, so she compared the First Friday in February to the previous First Friday, and we also did this for last year's February 1st Friday because they're both the food truck First Friday. And both years, last year, we had about 2,000 more people than a regular Friday, and this year, we had 3,000 more people downtown than a regular Friday. So it shows that the hard work of Amanda, I want to make sure everyone, you know, my name is said, but Amanda does a lot of the work too, our event coordinator. She's got some crazy amazing ideas. A lot of times I think she's totally lost it, but they go over. Sasquatch, I mean, some of the ideas are wild, but they go over really well. People love it. And so we're just really excited that we have this data to show 3,000 more people in our downtown is incredible for our community. I can also say that the income and the income level of those families was up for First Friday in February. It also shows that we have, it's pretty much like 50/50 on black and white that come downtown for First Friday. So we really have a diverse group, and the age ranges were crazy too. It's 18-plus, 18 to 22, I think, is really pretty low, which is surprising. And we have 35 to 44, and 45 to like 55 or 56 is a huge market that come downtown for First Friday. So that shows me that it's people coming with families, because I'm in that age range, with two kids, and my kids come down. And so I think we're just drawing an additional group of people that maybe I can say probably 10 years ago would absolutely not have come to downtown because it was just for college kids. So we are really working hard to create a diverse atmosphere downtown and make sure that we're providing something for the whole community, so.
She told you 3,000 more than last year, so tell them what total that number was.
Oh, gosh, you're putting me on the spot. Was it 17?
It's 200.
7,000.
On Friday night.
Wow.
And I mean, if you look at our pictures on our Main Street, they were, that one block was just totally crowded. It was wonderful.
And for hours on end, too.
Yes, yes.
It didn't just fizzle out.
Yeah, it was five to nine. So it was really good. Yeah.
And Carley was very quick to give credit to Amanda, and I will also, as she does, she actually emailed me this last week. She emailed me, and the PD and Public Works, thanking them for their work to make an event like that happen. She said even the police officers were helping roll off Herbie Kirbys. So it truly takes a village to do that kind of thing, and Carley and Amanda steer that village, and they do it well. But I was amazed by the total number that she gave me based on that placer data, and I wanted you all to have the opportunity to hear that, so.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it makes it worth it because that's a long day. And like you said, we couldn't do it without Public Works and the police officers specifically. Their ranger was wonderful to help us tote stuff back to our office. And Public Works employees, we couldn't do it because there was times, probably five or six years ago or even last year, where we were at the end of the night walking around picking up trash and rolling Herbie Kirbys. And it gets, I keep saying to Hank, we're not getting any younger. So that's a specifically long day, so it helps to have the other departments' support.
We thank you.
Sasquatch.
In Sasquatch, yes.
Thank you, and Amanda, along with everyone else, for all of the diligent, hard work the department has, all of the employees put in. You said a couple of key words that stand out to me, and that diversity was one of them. And it's beyond the black and white count, but as many as we have in this community, whether it's Latino, whether it's Asian, we have a very diverse community here. Not only just the community, but with our college students. So thank you for making the best First Fridays you can make it be.
Thanks, yes.
Thank you. So-
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do, Carley.
If you want to roll on now?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to cover a couple of things that you all will be voting on tonight and then share some information with you on a few others. Resolution R 240207 is a resolution to authorize a construction contract with Skyline Construction Services for roof repairs to the Allen's Market Building. It says roof repairs, but for all intents and purposes, it is a roof replacement. And this is something that has needed to be done for some time. That building was in a little bit worse shape than we had been led to believe by previous executive directors. And between Ms. Shinholster being on the board and Ms. Tobler, the new executive director down there, we realized that something needed to be done pretty quickly. You can see the base bid on that was $57,100. We added some additional work there to top the masonry walls and brick around the facade and also use some- and brick around the facade, uh, and also use some bronze, 24-gauge coated steel for, um, the downspouts, and, uh, that brought it up to 65,250 dollars. So, uh, they were one of three bidders that bid on it, and they were the low bid. Uh, Skyline has done work for us in the past. Uh, we've always been very pleased with their work, and we're happy to be able to, to have them get that bid. And if you all approve it tonight, um, and authorize it, then then begin, um, that work. Probably not as happy as Ms. Tobar, but, uh, we are happy to, to, to protect our building. Resolution 240208, uh, is a resolution to authorize a contract with Atlas Structural. You all, um, approved a contract back in September, um, with Simonton Engineering, uh, who does the majority of our stormwater and, and traffic engineering. And, um, this was to do the engineering on some channelization and right turn only lanes coming out of Midway Hills, um, and Lakeview Primary Schools onto Blandy Road. As you all know, the traffic on Blandy Road, I think, probably since day one, that all those schools were put out there in the same place, it's been a nightmare. And, uh, the school system came to us at the beginning of the school year. Uh, we actually used some movable barriers to kind of test out the theory, uh, at the beginning of school. That along with the engineering work that Paul and his group did, uh, came up with, uh, the plan that you have on the screen in front of you and that I shared with you in my report to you, um, last week. Uh, Paul put the bid package together, and, uh, I believe we had two bidders on that project. And, uh, Atlas Structural was the low bid and the bid that, um, Paul qualified for us. This will be, uh, paid for through the speed camera revenue that we generate, uh, in front of the high school and will soon be generating on Blandy Road. When those cameras are put up, a portion of that, uh, those funds have to be utilized for educational purposes. That's a pretty nebulous description, and there's really no percentage that has to be done for that. But, um, we felt like this was good, uh, funding, or good use of the educational funds from the speed camera revenue. So between engineering and construction, this will be, uh, $46,557.50 project, um, when this is, uh, completed. So you have the contract in your book, uh, for Atlas Structural, and I will answer any questions that you have. Paul is here, and he can answer any questions that I cannot. Lastly, in terms of resolutions that are coming up, uh, on this meeting, Resolution 240209 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Peach State Construction Company. As I said to you in my report last week, when I sent this information to y'all, this is a biggie. It's a biggie both in terms of cost and some of the issues that it's going to be remediating. As you can see, um, the, I'm, I'm not going to show you the plans. I've got them in the presentation, in, in this, um, uh, book, in this presentation, but I also gave them to you in my report last week. You really can't see much about them on this screen, anyway. But, um, engineering has been done, uh, for stormwater drainage improvements on, um, Woodview Circle, Leo Court, Sinclair Dam Road, Longacre Drive, Stone Ridge Drive, Allison Drive, River Ridge Road, portions, very small portion of Thomas Street, and, uh, West Montgomery Street. The thing that I really want to call your attention to, uh, is the fact that these are, um, these nine projects, or projects at nine different locations, are, um, added to the 16 other projects that you see on the screen in front of you at the top of that list that are coded in green, um, that have already been completed, uh, in the last three years, well, that, actually about last two and a half years, uh, on stormwater issues. Most of those that you see that have been completed have been completed in-house, and, um, some of the notes are just help us re, to remember where those were. And then what you see in yellow, with the exception of the very last one down where it says M P D, um, those are all part of the projects that you have in this, um, construct, this, uh, contract for Peach State Construction Company. So, uh, our stormwater, uh, folks, through the, uh, direction of Public Works Director, Tim Thomas, have been working hard, um, to get these situations remediated. This is huge in terms of keeping the roads intact. It's huge in terms of, um, trying to reduce infiltration into our, into our wastewater treatment, uh, our wastewater, um, plumbing and piping. And I appreciate what, um, what Public Works or what the stormwater crew has done so far. Everything that is in the contract tonight will be paid for through, um, through ARPA funds. And, uh, unfortunately, this is about half a million dollars more than I initially earmarked for ARPA funds, but, uh, that's just the cost of doing business today. And, and if we can, if we can ultimately get our money from the congressionally directed spending requests that we've got in Senator Wardock's office, we'll easily be able to take care of this additional. And, and we can, anyway, uh, e, even if necessary to use the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. But, um, let me make one notation that is in your packet. If you look at the contract price, the contract price, um, is, excuse me, let me get to it so I can give you the right numbers, If you look at the bid sheets, page six in the bid sheet shows that the total of all proposals is $2,702,500. Where the difference is, is if you look on page two of the bid sheets, there was a calculation error on line 1H in terms of the total price, uh, based on the unit price of that, um, pipe that would be removed there. So that's the difference. Seldom do we get a difference that's less than what's on the bid sheets, but, uh, that is the case now, and, uh, that is the reason that that, um, uh, price went from two, little, 2.7 million to, um, just over 2.6 million. A couple of other things that I want to bring to your attention, um, is I mentioned to you in our report, uh, the city of Millageville Fire Rescue was applying for, um, a fireworks tax grant. At the time that I shared that information with you, I told you that it would be for, uh, equipment that would be, we know would be approved by the grant if we, if it was funded. And, uh, since I've talked with you, Battalion Chief Ronnie Croomes has sent me, uh, a quotation and what this grant will be used for. There's a, a spending request limit of 25,000. We will be asking for 21,345. And what that will purchase is five sets head to toe of bunker gear, uh, for five firefighters. So, um, I appreciate the fire rescue group going after grants that they see out there. They're available, and, um, hopefully we'll be able to bring back to you the information, uh, in the few months to come, that that one was actually, um, funded. Mayor, that's all I have, uh, right now, uh, to cover in my report. I'll be happy to ask, are there any questions anybody has about any of those items or anything else?
Any questions from anyone? So, on that, I, I want to ask a question, because I'm going back to when we first started about the red speed. So you can use funding from the red speed cameras to, for the school zones or something dealing with the school?
You can use it for school safety.
Okay. No more questions?
What's the length of, projected length of time for, um, stormwater?
Paul? Yeah. I think that was what was in the contract.
Okay, 270 days, okay.
270 days, yeah. And there's some clawbacks if they don't meet those.
Okay.
Timeline, that timeline.
All right, any idea about when we would get started?
I do not. I suspect, I suspect that, uh, as soon as we get a signed contract to, uh, Peach State, they're ready to go, uh, but. I'm thinking no later than April 1. I, I, I would think, so.
That's good, thank you.
Mayor, I actually did forget one other thing. Uh, most of you saw the notice that we sent out to the public, but Public Works got started this past weekend, uh, demolition, demolishing the equipment at Central City Park, uh, for the new equipment that is coming there. We are also taking down, um, some of the exercise equipment that's up on the hill that is made out of expanded metal, that is just a disease waiting to happen if somebody gets cut. But we are leaving some of that area, because some of it is still usable and it, and it is used. But, uh, I'm excited about that. We anticipate delivery of that equipment by March 25th, and, um, installation will start the next Monday, so.
It's Ms. Map to mute her phone. I think that chirping is coming from over on her phone.
Ms. Map, did you hear the mayor?
No, I didn't.
She asked if you could mute your phone. She thought that some chirping was maybe coming from it.
It is, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we don't have any old business tonight, so we'll move to new business, and I'll ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2402-05 by caption.
An ordinance amending, the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millageville, Georgia. The ordinance grants a special use for a Circle K convenience store and gas station located at 234 North Columbia Street.
All right, this is the first reading, and I'll assign the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R 2402-07 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a construction contract with Skyline Construction Services Incorporated to repair the Allen's Market Building roof, a city-owned building currently managed by Allied Arts.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Are there any questions? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, the resolution is approved. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2402-08 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a construction contract with Atlas Structural for Blandy Road traffic improvements, as shown on the plan submitted by Simonton Engineering LLC.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, the motion, the resolution is approved. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2402-09 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a contract with Peach State Construction Company LLC for stormwater drainage replacement and improvements.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
So we don't have any alcohol license applications or appointees, appointments tonight. I understand that we need to go into closed mo, uh, closed session to discuss a personnel and or property issue. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, second.
I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, at this time, we'll be going into closed session. You all are welcome to stay until we come out. I don't think we'll be taking any actions tonight, but you're welcome to stay until we come back to the front. And just in case you all don't stay, do we have a class from Georgia College here tonight? And whose class with, whose classes?
Jeff Wilkinson's, I bet.
Okay. Uh, do you need a picture? Okay.
Better get it.
Okay, come on, let's, let's do it.
Go do it right up here. We're going down there.
You can just stand right there and then. About, you, you need a volley, all right?
Give it up here or going down there?
Billy, can you take it?
They could beat y'all around in the corner in the hallway, too.
No, I'm standing in the background.
Yeah, come on around, stick y'all.
Y'all just stand over this way.
Got to get your background. We had our background set up, yeah.
Yeah, don't watch. Tear up my digital camera.
Come on, Jimmy, you ain't never in one of them.
Y'all just move over this way tighter. Move that chair, yeah, please.
I didn't, I didn't see you back over there. So, you want to stand around, or you want to get, get upside and?
Who's not? We're not. They'll leave single, what, one or two of them?
No going back, no. And I'll get them, I'll get them to you tomorrow as well. If the mayor's around.
Wait, don't move. Pop a rice, everybody's got to get one.
Y'all ready?
Have a motion, we open, uh, go back into open session?
Second.
All right, so this is to go back into open session. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Map? Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, we have returned back to open session. No actions was taken in closed session. I would bet there are no more items on the agenda. Does anyone, um, council have any comments or announcements? Not hearing it?
We'll say that.
Husband must have thought I was on the run today. He brought me the most beautiful mixed bouquet of roses. I said, "Well, I don't understand the yellow ones, the jealous ones." I don't understand. I don't understand them. But no, he is happy Valentine's Day to all of you all, men and women alike. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Alright, call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Mount? Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Alright, meeting adjourned.